Item one. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on January seventeen, twenty twenty five to the whole New Brunswickian Star Ledger, the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted at City Hall Seventy-Eighth Bayor Street in Brunswick. Item number one, roll call please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Caldwell?
Here.
Ms. Jackress?
Here.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Verella? Mr. Adorno?
Here.
Ms. Delia?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item number two, the flexo. Turn it to Dr. Johnson. Reminder, the reorganization meeting will be held on Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty five, beginning at six P. M. here at the New Brunswick High School Auditorium. And the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty five, beginning at seven P. M. here as well at the New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. I have a presentation. Turn it to the students, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Johnson, cabinet members, staff, and community members. We are living in a time when the world of technology is exploding all around us. Artificial intelligence is no longer a futuristic concept. It's become part of our everyday vocabulary. Robots are quickly becoming everyday appliances, seamlessly integrating into our daily lives. Cars are driving themselves now, drones are delivering packages, and homes are being three D printed in a matter of days. What once felt like science fiction is now reality. This rapid evolution isn't just changing how we live, it's reshaping the skills our students need to thrive in the future. Here in New Brunswick, we're not waiting for the future to arrive. We're preparing our students for it today. We empower our learners with twenty first century skills that go beyond the textbooks, helping them become problem solvers, critical thinkers, and independent innovators. Tonight, we are proud to spotlight the New Brunswick Middle School Tech Team, a shining example of what happens when students are given the tools, trust, and freedom to take charge of their own learning. Through self-directed learning and real-world application, these children have taught themselves how to manage and repair broken devices in their school. Using design thinking and technology as their guide, they've learned to identify problems, conduct meaningful research, analyze and evaluate their options, and develop solutions. Their tier-one repairs, ranging from replacing cracked screens to fixing keyboards and rebooting systems, demonstrate not only technical skill, but a deep commitment to learning and growth. These are not just tech skills, they are life skills, transferable to every career challenge and opportunity they will face. Tonight, you will see how New Brunswick prepares, empowers, and inspires students to be lifelong learners, ready to lead in a world defined by constant innovation. We welcome now our New Brunswick Middle School eighth-grade tech team, with Mrs. Angie Benetowick, our New Brunswick Middle School team specialist, and our students. Anay Castro Maraquin, Kamar Kokri, David Gomez Garcia, Allison Guarneros Vega, Tanya Lazar Flores, Brianna Moreno Velasquez, Marco Ovaya Garcia, Dulce Torres Menes, Steven Chelwa Garcia, and Leslie Samora Di Baja. Children, come on.
Good evening, my name is Allison, and welcome to our presentation of our student tech team.
Hello, everyone, hi, I'm Brianna, and I want to explain our logo a little. One of our first tasks was to design a logo to represent us. I designed this one came out, which is, which is one of our, our tech tools. There were four logos submitted, and the school voted on their favorite, and this one.
Hello, my name is David, and the New Brunswick Middle School Tech Team is made up of twelve eighth graders, Kamar, Brianna, Marco, Steven, Dulce, Leslie, Allison, Anay, Tanya, Brandon, and Amelia. And we're led by Ms. Berencheck, and me, item two oh nine, for win every day.
Good evening, my name is Marco, I will be explaining why this is student tech team. We are a group of students from New Brunswick Middle School who have, uh, who have teachers and our students from our school. We, we expand our technology skills to enhance experience, and collaborative, work collaborative with teachers and students to enhance technology and.
Um, Steven, and here are the key responsibilities of the MDMS tech team. We provide technical assistance to not just students, but teachers too. We maintain and manage school technology resources. We also assist in device deployment and collection too, and we perform tier one code of affairs.
Hi, my name is Dulce, and using the benefits of being on the tech team, it helps us develop valuable technical skills and enhances our problem solving and critical thinking. It fosters leadership and teamwork skills. It provides opportunities for hands-on real-world experience. It builds our confidence and sense of responsibility, provides potential career path explorations too.
My name is Leslie, and this is our tech team journey. Our partnership with Horizon Elementary School has opened doors to new tech tools. Our tech team started in the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two school year as a small club in L. C. C. A. We gained hand, we gained hands-on experience with all the needs and knowledge you provide and regular help and screen out the those products.
Hi, this is actually my third year of being a part of the tech team. I was a part of the build-up ceremony along with Leslie and the mayor and a few other members of Rising King. Not me, but a few of my other classmates made tips and tricks for the code book in case you're having a difficult time with it. We started coding on three robots, and later we moved on on drones. My personal favorite were drones because now if you don't encode it, you could also re-modify it.
Our tech team journey. With so many code books in use across the school, minor tech issues like broken keyboards, cracked screens, and software more functions become a common challenge. Instead of relying only on outside repairs and Mr. Batista, the district saw an opportunity to empower us and our new and improved tech team was born. Word is now, students taking charge of repairs. We tackled tier one support issues like screen repairs, keyboard replacements, power washes for software, turbo shooting, and battery replacement. We were self-taught and used our resources to figure and to figure out how to do these repairs. At the next slide, we will see a demo of the L. C. D. screen replaced.
Hi, you receive, there's a crack in the screen, and we're gonna be replacing it. Don't make sure the power off the code book. Now we're gonna remove this piece right here from the code book screen. You gotta take off the tape. The tape might be a little hard, but it's okay. Once you get it off, you'll be able to, be able to take off the wire. Once you disconnect it, you'll be able to load screen. Or the new screen. But first make sure you take off the film. You wanna make sure all the teeth are lined up and connected. Alright, there we go. We can put the tape back on. And then you'll screw everything back in. You wanna make sure it's on that first, sometimes it'll be hot. So you wanna make sure the bottom is on first. And then make sure this core piece, please. For, oh, I'm sorry, completely. Once it's connected, you'll screw the top screw back in. Now this, I'll back it. It's gonna take a while. Getting it first to turn on. It's gonna take a while. I'll be in the seat, you fix the screen, and then now we have to log into the Google phone.
Hi, my name is Anay. We have lots of tissue support to make this happen. Mister Pardo gave us the unit to start this project. Ms. Gonzalez Lugo, Mister Bazza, and Ms. Bootch was providing us with these bricks to work every morning.
Hello, my name is Tanya. Some other key individuals include Mister Levine, who provided us with toolkit, cleaning supplies, bins, and decommissioned computers where we could learn through disassembly and exploration. In addition, Mister Batista provided us with assistance and feedback whenever we stumbled across an issue. Um, this has been our tech team presentation, and we'd like to thank you for listening.
Thank you. That was amazing, thank you. Okay, time to to Dr. Johnson that newly we have our future IT department. Thank you again. Moving to item number four, the minutes, can I please have a motion for March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five monthly board meeting?
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Jackress?
Yeah.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Delia?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number five, the superintendent's report, Dr. Aubrey Johnson?
Yes, thank you. As, as of April, we enrolled eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight students. We had three cases of harassment and intimidation on building in. Our law suspensions were at two hundred and ninety-three suspensions, our staff attendance at ninety-four percent, and our student attendance at ninety-three percent. Just to have a couple announcements, um, state assessments begin this week, started yesterday at the high school. The middle school will start on May first, and our elementary schools on May twelfth. Um, these assessments are very, an extremely important opportunity for us to demonstrate the knowledge and skills they have acquired throughout the school year. In preparation, schools have reinforced key concepts, offered practice opportunities, and provided families with study and online resources. I think collectively, as we move forward, helping our students be at their best starts with healthy habits, such as getting enough rest, eating nutritious meals, and relaxing techniques, and definitely acquire space at home for them to redo, review, uh, their schoolwork, which can be helpful. Above all, I think it's important that we remind our children that their efforts matters most, and that staying calm, focused, and positive will help them perform to their best of their abilities. So I'm looking forward of, to them trying their best. Our teachers have worked hard, um, our administrators have worked hard, and now it's their time to perform. On March twenty seventh, our talented student musicians came together for our annual All-City Music Festival Choir Performance, which once again showcased the remarkable vocal abilities of our students who've come across the district. The event celebrated the power of music to unify and inspire, and we commend our music educators for their dedication and leadership. On April fourth, we had our March Snackness Competition. As you look at some of the pictures, I hope you can connect to some of the events. Uh, but the, uh, the smarts, Snackness Competition took place, and was fun and engaging, way for us to promote healthy eating habits across our schools. Students and staff participated in a friendly competition that highlighted nutritious snacks and encouraged wellness in our school community. Their creativity and school spirit were on full display. On Saturday, April fifth, we had our FACE Summit. It's the FACE, it's the first FACE Summit, uh, that we've had, um, and we want to believe that it was extremely successful. We came, uh, we visited, we had a lot of community providers, but what was really enriching about it was that we brought together many families, uh, many staff, and community parts to strengthen our collaborative efforts and important student achievement and well-being. So the focus is really about how we can work together, um, to increase student performance and their well-being. Um, we had workshops, we had resource tables, uh, interactive sessions, that empowered families and that with valuable tools and information to stay actively involved in their child's education. And on April twenty fifth, one of my favorite events was the Wax Museum, and, uh, if you have not gotten a chance to, to visit, hopefully next year, um, but this, this, um, event happened at the middle school, our middle school students, students at the middle school, um, and it's just important to watch how they brought history to real life. So as you visit the, the Wax Museum, you have, uh, students just standing on a pedestal, I mean, frozen as a statue. And I know that was a very hot day, and there's a little button that you press, and when you press the button, they come to life. And the animation, uh, the addiction, um, the breadth of knowledge they were able to impart just really showed the capabilities that our student have, uh, when dealing with stuff that's really, really important to them. And, and embodying the spirits of some of our great leaders, um, you know, I actually learned a lot, uh, some of the speakers I know of, but to hear it coming from our young mouths and our young students with such passion, it's just really makes me feel that this is what teaching and learning is about. So I will definitely remind everyone next year, um, and maybe, maybe we'll probably put on a demonstration before the end of the school year, one of the meetings also up to the principal. Think it's a great idea, actually, I'm not gonna take credit, that was her idea, I was just trying to, I just realized she was sitting here, so I had to correct myself. Um, and lastly, um, as we approach Principal Appreciation Day on May first and Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, between May fifth and May ninth, I just wanna take a moment to express our deepest gratitude for the incredible leaders and educators who shape our school community. Principals play a vital role in guiding our schools, supporting our staff, and ensuring that our students thrive. Teachers with the dedication, passion, and creativity aspire and empower students every day to reach their fullest potential. These special observances give us an opportunity to reflect on the hard work, care, and commitment of both our principals and teachers. Let's take time to show our appreciation for everything they do to support and nurture our students. Whether through a kind note, a small gesture, or simply expressing our thanks, each act of appreciation makes a difference. And if you noticed, the only thing that I could do today, at the last minute, we had a principal's meeting, in appreciation to them, I said, you know what, you can go home and skip the board meetings, it's also a little empty today, so. That was based on me, except for this little girl who's here in attendance. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, can I please have a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Second.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Jackress?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Delia?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Let's try this one, there's no feedback, everybody. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna skip, Ms. Ma, Ms. Emily, uh, is not, was not able to join us today, so we're gonna move onto item number seven, Facilities Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Facilities Committee meeting was held on April ninth at five P. M. We continued our discussion of the capital projects and our twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. Our discussion further refined the scope, cost estimates, and proposed schedule. The H-back replacement project at the Pathways Campus is the furthest along, furthest along. The construction documents for the project have been completed. We are currently on schedule to start the work at the end of the school year. As we develop the other projects further, I will provide more details. This concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. Uh, moving to item number eight, the Athletic Committee Report by Ms. Ashley Caldwell.
Good evening. The spring season is halfway through, and we are starting to enter the championship part of the season. The Boys and Girls Track Team are competing today and tomorrow in the Middlesex County Relay Championships, after a very successful trip to the world famous Penn Relays last week. Esports will play in the state playoffs starting tomorrow, hoping to make another deep run in our third year. Earlier this month, Kevin Mercado, who participates in football, wrestling, and golf, as well as Kennedy Johnson, who participates in cheerleading, basketball, and flag football, earned a sportsmanship award for the Greater Middlesex Conference. Kennedy also received a five hundred dollar scholarship from the G. M. C. In addition, New Brunswick won the White Division Sportsmanship Award for the county. Currently, the New Brunswick Baseball Team is tied for first place in the division with a record of eight and one on the season, and looking to capture a division title for the first time in recent memory. Once the next few weeks are, over the next few, few weeks, our teams will enter the county as well as state tournaments. May I have a motion to approve the Bank Reconciliation Report, please?
Second.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Jackress?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Delia?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number nine, the Curriculum and Policy Committee Report by Ms. Diana Jackress.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum and Policy Committee met last week on April twenty second. Uh, CNI has engaged and or led a few district events that our superintendent, Dr. Johnson, also highlighted. Uh, All-City Music Festival on February twenty eighth, uh, with the orchestra, and on March twenty seventh with the choir, the Teen Arts Festival on March twelfth, the Tournament of Bands Emerge Competition on March fifteenth. The twenty twenty five Middlesex County Unsung Heroes, uh, was on March twenty sixth. The High School Taco Competition was on March twenty seventh. March Snackness was April fourth in collaboration with Food Corps. Uh, FACE, Family and, uh, Community Engagement Summit was on April fifth, like I said, Dr. Johnson mentioned those. Uh, last but not least, we had the grand opening of the Greenhouse at McKinley Community School on April twenty second. Our students having access and engaging in learning with the Greenhouse will teach them about responsibility, patience, and problem solving, as well as how to care for their environment, their health, and their community. The Greenhouse at its core will be a place to cultivate people, to inspire curiosity, character, and leadership in every child who steps inside of it. Uh, the resolutions, uh, we reviewed were recommended for approval, and all resolutions are in the consent agenda. The regulation, uh, was P. nine one six three, Spectator Code of Conduct for Interscholastic Events. This is a new one. The New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association, also known as N. J. S. I. A. A., is requiring every member, uh, school to adopt a Spectator Code of Conduct policy during the twenty four, twenty five school year as per N. J. S. I. A. A. guidance dated May eighth, twenty twenty four. The adopted policy should require immediate removal of persons from the event and school premises for violating the policy. Minimum disciplinary measures including suspension of a person from attending future interscholastic events for violating the policy. A required educational component for violators. Parent acknowledgement of receipt of a copy of the policy, a code of conduct provisions of the policy. A code of conduct provisions of the policy to be posted at all venues hosting competition to the extent possible. The required policy shall also include an appeal process. NJSIAA is also requiring a district's policy to include increased disciplinary actions for multiple violations in a defined period of time to be determined by the district. That does conclude my curriculum and policy report. However, Madam President, if I may just take a minute to acknowledge that last week was School Bus Driver Acknowledgement Day. And I had the pleasure really of witnessing a couple of months ago an emergency evacuation drill. I was just dropping off my children. My children did not take the bus, and I got to witness this. And, you know, sometimes we go on about our day, day to day, and we don't kind of think about it. Personally, my kids don't take the bus, so I, you know, we just know that we expect people to do our job and get it done. And I can tell you that what I witnessed was just really something that touched my heart. Seeing the older children help the younger children off the bus in this emergency drill evacuation of the bus. And I can tell you that as a parent, as a board member, I was just touched and moved by this act. I know that principals have seen this probably several times, right? And we don't get to see that as board members. That's not something that we get to witness. So for anyone that is a bus driver, I don't know if you have any bus drivers in the audience, but I do just want to take a second to acknowledge all the work that they do to transport the children in our district to and from school in a safe way every single day. And I know that usually the only time we hear about school bus drivers is when something isn't done right. And every single day, they are transporting hundreds of children to and from where they need to be. So truly, from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say a thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Moving to item number ten, the Student Support Services Committee. Mr. Ivan Adorno?
Thank you, Madam President. As our Great Autism Awareness Month would close, we celebrate progress made in the increasing understanding and acceptance of individuals with autism. While April shines as a special spotlight on autism, our commitment to raising awareness and fostering inclusion continues throughout the year. As we enter May, we turn our focus to mental health awareness. Mental health awareness is vital in breaking down stigma, encouraging early intervention, and building a culture of empathy and support. By promoting open conversations, we help create a more compassionate community where individuals feel empowered to seek help. We also want to remind our school community that we have a dedicated mental health support staff, that we have dedicated mental health support staff available in all our schools, including our school-based mental health program, WIS, who are ready, available, and readily available to assist students and families in. Thank you, Madam President.
And if anyone has witnessed some of the work that the WIS program does, it's truly remarkable what they're doing. Moving to item number eleven, Public Comments. I'm gonna turn it to Ms. Villalona.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have four sign-ups for this evening, starting with Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Good evening. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Charlie Cradaville, one forty-three Sedan Street. I'm gonna start by thanking my New Brunswick Today colleague, Carlos Ramirez, for recording tonight's meeting. It's unfortunate that this board is one of the only ones in our area that does not publish recordings of its public meetings. So the team at New Brunswick Today does our best to fill in that gap for the community. And yeah, folks will be able to watch the meetings on the New Brunswick Today YouTube channel. This board is also an extreme outlier in that you require members of the public to sign up in advance of the meeting to speak. Madam President, can you name a single other board event in New Jersey that has this on its requirement?
I don't have any comments, but please continue.
Okay. Did you receive the email I sent you last month?
I do not recall, no.
Oh, well, I did send you one. I want to make sure that it's received. Could you open it up to your colleagues? Did anybody on the board receive my email last month?
Yeah. Please continue with your comments.
I didn't hear the answer. What's the answer?
There is no answer. Please continue with your comments.
There's no answer. Why not?
Please continue. You have about a minute.
So you're refusing to answer the question of whether or not you received an email? I know you didn't even know if you did, but your colleagues don't want to share, or you don't want them to share? Why? Disappointed I haven't received any responses from the eight board members I contacted via email list last month. To the newest member, Ms. Alvarez, you are exempt. I will be reaching out to you and hope that you can have some dialogue with me. It's nothing to be afraid of. I would like to ask about the $4 million for the new HVAC system at Forty Fandike. Can anybody tell me if there's any other major problems with that building or major capital improvements that will be needed?
We'll have Mr. Frank comment on that.
That's the main capital project we're planning at this point. Charlie, we've been working with the SDA on that. We knew about that for a while with them. They're providing a substantial amount, part, if not all, in grant money for that. So, and that's really, we were aware of it and know to take care of it. The original units that have been on the building, so that'll bring the building up to current status.
Thanks, Mr. Little Jay. And I'll just close by saying it's never too late to open your heart or change your mind. I am attempting to open up a dialogue with you because I genuinely believe that there are great things we can accomplish if and when we work together. Out front, I noticed on the sign, it says, "Get comfortable with being uncomfortable because progress is power." So I'm not afraid to have uncomfortable conversations. Are you?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next on our list, we have Ms. Leta Stork.
Who do you name restored?
What do you do? Well, I had some questions about some of the agenda items. That HVAC system, because I was wondering if at the time of the purchase, it was known that the HVAC system was going to need to be completely replaced? Okay, well, that was what I was wondering.
Yes, it was. Yes, we were aware of it. Again, as I said, we were planning with the SDA to have that replaced.
So that was.
But we did not want it to postpone us acquiring the building.
Okay. My next question was about the previous resolution AP approving the capital projects. The last one on the list is the New Brunswick High School Fields Project. Interested to know if that is being submitted as a natural grass fields project or artificial turf fields project?
At this point, we're just moving forward with preliminary site work over there, but haven't gotten that far yet.
Oh, okay, because more and more, you're powerful things about the artificial turf, both in terms of the environmental impact, but more importantly, the health impact for the athletes or whoever is using the field. So, yeah, I think we should really look long and hard at that. And the other thing that concerned me very much is the two hundred and ninety-three suspensions. I'm curious to know to what extent the restorative justice program that we spoke of before at previous meeting has been rolled out? Or what, if it's not, I mean, what, this is worse than ever. I, so, I already thought it was bad when it was over a hundred. This is like, like, you know, one in every thirty students being suspended every month. Something has to change. That's not.
Would you like me to respond?
I would.
I agree with you. The number is high. But I can tell you, after looking at the data and having some conversations, we have a number of students through progressive discipline that are not following the rule or order in regards to agreements, and a lot of it is just cutting class. And administrators decide to set a tone. It's getting warm. We have seen students just not following many times, you know, next time, next time. But there's a point where we just have to put a stand down to let all our students understand that we are here to teach. We expect our students to follow school rules. We expect our students to be accountable to themselves as well and each other. So this spike is a result of a reset after numerous progressive discipline conversations throughout the school year, throughout the, not the school year, throughout the, I believe, the last three months. And within that numbers, we do have students that have multiple, so multiple offenses. So I had the conversation with administrator. I understood exactly what happened, and I do understand the points of setting the correct tone right now as the weather gets warm. But to answer your first question, we feel very comfortable with the work that we've been doing with store to practice in our schools. You know, there's a lot of dynamics. I'm not gonna infer on this fight, but there's a lot of things happening politically, globally. Things that just seem a little out of whack, and of course, it filters into our schools as well. And we're definitely gonna continue to provide this support. We're gonna go back and look at some trend data in regard to the student population, the separate population, determine if there is a pattern, and provide the supports necessary for our students. But at the minimum, students need to understand that they come to school to learn, not to cut class and roam the halls. And I think we may be a little bit too lenient on that, and we need to correct those behaviors. That concludes my remarks.
Next, we have Mr. Carlos Camires.
Good evening, Mr. Camires.
Good afternoon, board members. Carlos Camires reported with New Brunswick Today. I wanted to inquire about the district as the school faculties or the board of it. Generally speaking, have you guys issued any citations or invoices to student parents for vandalism or property damage caused to school property?
Yes, we have.
Is there a rough number of how much that total has added up to this year?
We don't have that data in front of me, no.
Do you know what type of damages have been caused to the property? Off recollection, maybe one or two or three incidents, or I do not believe that's, it's not a big problem. But it's with students who have repeatedly damaged Chromebooks or have vandalized district property. But the majority of what you were speaking of specifically could be from, because I believe you brought it up before, the Chromebooks. We are probably providing three Chromebooks to some students. And just trying to figure out why it's vandalized because either we don't want to use the tool or it's just not cared for. So after the third attempt, just around that time, a conversation with parents, after the first and second, the district, you know, needs to recoup the costs. So that's why there has been some fines, and we have been also working with families who cannot afford it. Okay, so we can say that after third time, those privileges are taken away. Is there currently any students? There's no privilege that has been taken away. Students receive a Chromebook when they come to school. They're just not taking it home. Okay, so most of the, I assume, the assignments for day-to-day basis include a Chromebook that they need. Is there any students that do any of these assignments on paper? Yeah, I'm sure. The Chromebook is just a tool. Okay, now, can you tell me whether social studies teacher David Wise is still employed within the district? No comment. Yes, and no comment. Thank you. You're welcome.
Next up, we have Ms. Liliana Hernandez. It seems that Ms. Hernandez is not present tonight. Madam President, that was our last person who signed up to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Villanueva. Moving to item number twelve, the President's Report. I shared with everyone last board meeting that a few of us were heading to the National School Board. And I mentioned that, and I shared at the time that I wanted to share some notes of some of our feedback of some of the stuff that we saw at the workshops and some of the conversations and really what the temperature was in some of the national conversations that were happening. I can tell you that walking away, that some of the conversations at Equity were still very much at the core of education. So, and if anything, I comment back or did, we talked about, just gonna point out some of the bullet points. Comment barriers to equity, complacency, mindset that creates to status quo, we talked about. Basic needs, what happens outside of the classroom that may impact some of the equity work that may happen around education, housing, food, transportation, childcare at times, healthcare. Some of this also kind of sounds like the social determinants of health, right, that may happen for children. Students believe failure to see the connection between education and future opportunity. I know that here, which is why it's important to have hands-on, right, we saw kids doing some of the tech work that in the technology, I feel like sometimes it's very exponentially, exponentially growing. So having those conversations and those hand-ons at a very early age. Other conversations where equity requires investment in people so that their value and worth, which I thought it was interesting, right? Talk about the sense of dignity, the sense of worth is recognized and acknowledged. School improve when they focus on five essential ingredients, coherent instructional guidance. Some of the, again, this is some of the topics that were talked about. I also joined a workshop that was about engagement in students. And one activity that really kind of stayed with me, there was a principal, and this was a principal from Maryland. She had a building that was about two hundred kids. And one of the activities that she had, and I mentioned this to Dr. Johnson, one of the activities that they did at the beginning of the year was print out all the pictures of the students and have teachers and have the whole building named the students by their first name, all of them. So that was very impactful, right? So I'm gonna bring up some of the other notes that I have. What does that look like? Rules of engagement, reengage, restore, and reward. They even, some of the rewards that they talked about was even having the kids win a pair of sneakers, reward sneakers, and have them choose, right, what's important in their perspective. So I thought that was interesting. They talked about trauma-informed implementations, recognize trauma triggers, foster predictable routines, and build emotional literacy, prioritize relationship over rules. So I also attended, we did an educational visit where the Atlanta Public Schools had a whole station of twenty-five electric buses. And what the conversation was at a relatively big city and how they had the whole setup and how they went about requiring or acquiring all these twenty-five buses. So I thought it was pretty remarkable what they were doing in terms of, you know, here we're doing greenhouse environments, right, in the carbon imprint that, or the lack of carbon imprint that they're doing. So I wanted to share those notes. And just wanted to also highlight the importance of having our kids and our babies ready for testing next week. So please, I know this is, it takes a village, so please remind everyone, if you have a kid, and remind them that to go to sleep early. We used to practice going to sleep early when I was younger. I don't want us to do that. So that concludes my report. Thank you. Um, so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Can I please have, moving to item number thirteen, Consent Agenda Resolutions A to Q. Can I please have a resolution to approve eight, resolutions A to AQ. Sorry.
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Jacquez?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, and we use, um, we use myself to go there.
Resolution, uh, noted. Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number fourteen, the Finance Committee Report, Ms. Patricia Varela.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met and reviewed the Finance Report. Can I please have a motion to accept the April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five Finance Report?
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Jacquez?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, page twenty-four.
Noted. Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes, our queue's on pages eight, fifteen, and twenty.
Eight, fifteen, and twenty, noted. Ms. Sevilla?
Yes, we queue some fifteen.
Page fifteen, noted. Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number fifteen, Resolution for Closed Session. Whereas the Open Meeting, Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten four dash six, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: One, personal matters; and two, matters of attorney and client privilege. Now therefore be resolved that the accursed subject should be discussing closed session by this Board of Education and its administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the public, with the, in accordance with the open public meetings no longer exist. Can I please have a motion for closed session?
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Jacquez?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
We'll be back.